Great, um. We've got one more, one, twenty seven.
That's all I wrote. And don't look at the numbers, he just cut that out as a talking point. I'm pretty sure. Want to catch up on those building meetings this week?
Okay, um. Motion to approve the meeting minutes of March sixteenth and the twentieth as written.
So.
Um, any discussion? All favor? Aye.
Alright.
Um, TJ, I think you have. Um, so I would approve the twenty seventh with just one amendment, so motion to approve. The meeting minutes of March twenty seventh of one amendment, I voted on. Nay on the.
Okay, can you write that in?
Yes.
Thank you. Which notes were those, Kara, sorry?
Um, it's from the twenty seventh, I voted no on reducing hours of voting.
Okay.
But the vote still passed. Um. Oh, that's. On favor?
Aye.
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 She'll cross it. Okay. Yes, we're so organized. Okay, um, audience participation? Alright, George, you got three minutes.
In January, I came before the board and asked about the greenout for bicentennial park.
Yep.
And I was probably told that it would take place in early spring.
Yes.
And I haven't seen any cleaning taking place, I was wondering who has the contract to do it and why it hasn't been done?
So, spring cleaning has not started yet for landscapers, I'm telling you that as the wife of a landscaper, he's just getting ready to get started, maybe in the next week or so. Um, and I believe that John usually does that part, so he will go ahead and do that.
What is the timetable?
I don't have one for you, you'll have to be patient.
And who is? And what company, what company has the contract?
We don't have a contract.
We don't have a contract?
No, we talk about bidding this every single year, it's a constant discussion, we always go out to bid, it's. We don't have a code.
So.
We have different. Landscapers that do different parts of town. In order to keep it local, and no one wants to bid on the whole job, so we do it piecemeal, it's worked for many years now.
So who has the piece of bicentennial park?
My husband's typically done that.
I'm sorry?
Yes, Joe.
Doug Emo just told me that he's starting to work this week.
Yeah.
And he has worked all.
So he has the contract for the park?
It's not a contract, but John typically does buy some time, ten oh, yes.
Okay. So.
What is your next question, George?
That was my primary concern, because it looks such a, such a mess.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, right, going back to.
Of your mind.
I'm gonna tell you something, because I just thought of it.
Okay.
Two of the rails are broken now.
Uh huh.
And the chair is busted, so I will take the chair home and repair it, if that's okay with the committee. And you gotta buy two new rails, they're jumping.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know, I just wanted to make sure it was on the document, because they need to be fixed.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay, just gave me a heart attack for a second there, highway department, come on down.
I was just. I wasn't bringing up.
What's up, Dave? Maybe they'll come to me when I was supposed to ask you, but. God, right now.
No?
No.
You can let me know tomorrow.
Okay.
Well, since you brought spring cleaning up. Um. Just remember, bears are gonna be coming out soon.
Yeah.
And need to bring your feeders in, because last year, when I had a guy who's working up here in North Platte. Um, somebody just down the street there had the bear feeders out all year. And my guy saw four bears across the road behind him.
Oh, wow, okay.
Um, also, while you're cleaning your yard, do not forget. Clean your cover pipe if you have one in your driveway.
Oh, okay, so we should do like a.
Let me add this to my. Yeah, let me add my newsletter, I like it.
I like it.
Spring cleaning, okay.
Yes. Since most of the snow has gone, which is nice.
Thank God.
Yeah, we. Yeah.
Yeah. Um. I've done some work on giving some numbers. For doing some roads over.
Okay.
Um. I think I explained to you, the last one I got was for doing a two-inch overlay. On a half mile on Beach Hill. And also to do crooks, which has never been done. Um, then I had, I came up with another option. Uh, what's gonna be, that price was one seventy-two. For just over.
I didn't hear that. One seventy-two?
One seventy-two.
For beach and crooks?
Yes.
And that's an overlay, you said?
Yes. Yes. My other one. A little more expensive, but. Um. This is six rollers.
Okay.
Um. Just over a mile on Beach Hill.
Okay.
From Route twenty-three. Just past Julius Hall. Alright, um. They're gonna do a rubber, a rubber chip seal on it. Okay, rubber chip seal.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Um, so. Beach Hill. Herrick. Wyman. Glasgow. Sunset. Rock. And Crooks Road.
Total there.
Two twenty-five.
That's not a huge difference.
No, there isn't, and the thing is, is that this. For, let's say, um, Herrick, Wyman. Glasgow, Sunset, and Crooks. On the average length of time for you, for the road itself. Once you apply the chip seal, it's between five to seven years.
Okay.
But on those roads I just named. It's probably almost double. Because there's no traffic.
There's very little, yeah.
Yeah.
What was that amount again, Dave, to what?
Well, I'll give you the whole number.
Yep.
Two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I got that, but the other one I got.
Two forty-six. Is the end of it, yeah.
What, what happened on one seventy-two?
What happened to it?
Yeah, what was that? That was the overlay.
That was your two-inch overlay on two roads.
So what's the one forty-six?
I didn't know something, he was saying two hundred and twenty-five thousand. One hundred and forty-six or something.
Two hundred and forty-six.
Yeah.
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 I got you, I just.
Thank you. And that's for that gypsum stuff? What do you call it, rubber?
Rubber chip seal.
Okay. I'll have to confirm that word with you. Rubber chip seal and.
Chip seal.
And how come it's, is it better?
Is it better, we get more bang for our buck?
Chip seal.
Um. So I did do a price to have these roads done with two-inch overlay. You're looking at just about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And like you said, the side roads, they're not used to have like.
Exactly.
And that, that, they put stone on it and then sweep it off?
They will sweep it twice.
Yes.
Yeah.
We had it done right where I worked.
Yeah.
It's ten years ago and it's still just as good as, I drove up there the other day, I couldn't believe it.
Yeah.
And that's a used road, it's like half a history, amazing, I was so impressed with it.
We also can do, if in the future. We can do another layer on it, or if we happen to have extra money in the future for that. We can go over with an overlay on it.
Yeah.
But I don't think the side streets is gonna really need a whole lot of it.
Okay.
Um, but. Beach Hill is another story.
A lot of trucks there, aren't there?
Uh, that's a lot of, a lot of, a lot more traffic, I would say, compared to my side streets.
So the first option does the same length of road on Beach Hill?
Um, half mile.
So the first option does half of the amount, but it's more substantial, we'll ask.
Yes.
What do you recommend, Dave?
I'm recommending do the rubber chip seal on it. I think we get a better, um. Longevity of the road that way.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as a.
Sorry, go.
Bring it on, okay.
This is using our cherry sheet money for. Next year, not. Chapter ninety, sorry.
Chapter, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, chapter ninety.
Okay.
Yes. So, since, we all agree on that? One, two?
Yeah.
Two, three, okay, so.
That's what you recommend.
Yes, I'm gonna go tomorrow morning when I get to work, I'm gonna go, so they, when they get to work, uh, from, from county, I'm gonna inform them that I need for them to start doing a contract.
Okay.
Uh, it probably take no more than maybe three days.
I got a question.
Sure.
And the, and the corners up here in the park.
Corners.
Have you, it is pretty bad, you have to drive out, you start, there's a couple of corners there that really need some repair. You actually drag with a low car?
Don't drive, don't drive a fancy car up there.
I didn't, like, mine's high enough, it goes up, but I've been through it out, like corvettes and stuff, you can't get through there without hitting. Mm-hmm. So is there something we could temporarily do to help that road out?
We could fill it in.
You know, maybe some, and then chip seal it, no, just.
No, 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 that would, that would. Um, I did have a quote on that.
Yeah, I remember you got a.
Three. About three years ago.
And we said no, because we, we didn't think it was a priority at the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um. But yeah, it, that would be expensive to do, to do it, to do it right.
No, no, I just spent that one quarter, so you don't go into it.
You're talking about, that, that the first, but the rent goes up around.
Exactly, that's. It's real bad. Just thrown out at a time.
Or. We close it to traffic, through traffic.
How are you gonna get chapter ninety-one for that road, you know?
Oh, true, true.
Yeah. You gotta leave that open, I mean, that's why I'm standing here. Can we put five thousand in it and fix it?
Five thousand?
Thousand, I'm just asking a number out of that.
That's, that's this park road?
Yes.
Watson.
Can, can we put chapter money on, uh?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
But we've always said no, because it's not a priority, it's, you know, no one needs to drive that to get home.
Yeah.
And it doesn't even get plowed in the winter.
Yeah.
Is there? Any legality with putting up a sign that warns people that there's a? You know, the low rider.
When you hit the something, then you didn't fix it, I just.
Well, we did sign on the first car, it stuck.
Is that something you could use?
Millions, I like millions. If I have no way compacted.
Okay.
That's, that's. It's only downfall, when you put the noise down, you gotta roll it.
I'm just thinking, the only reason anyone's driving around there is for, either they don't know how to turn around, or they're not quite sure, they start going, and you know what I mean? It's just for enjoyment, so I think that if there was some way to say. Before you go that way, right at the, the V there, can I say? If you have a low rider, turn back now, you know? I'm not sure legally was, like insurance, it's just a.
Because we know about it, you don't.
I don't think low riders turn back.
And then you'll have them all up there picking it up.
Um, so. This week, we're starting doing some potholes, well, some. Yeah, the potholes. A couple of roads.
Okay.
And, um. Get right back to, we're getting ready, I, I got. Ray is out still for a little while, he's on and off. I got one guy coming back from his, and his girlfriend said yes for the engagement.
Oh, good, congratulations, how's his son doing?
Uh, his son is doing good. He was, he was in here today for a little while.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Good.
Um, but he's, he's doing really good, he's got great spirits, you know, it's like his dad.
Good.
You know? But I, we're gonna do some pothole, pothole fixing. On some roads nearby. Um, then we're gonna start doing some road grading.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
But other than that. The roads see pretty decent.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I've been up. All of them so far, I mean, yeah, you're gonna have potholes, but other than that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you can still. They know mud, and you like, you know.
You've never had any real frost?
Yeah.
Oh, you're like, can, yes, question.
You need to get over to the Old Town Hall.
Yeah.
Where they push the snow back, they got a hole that deep that your husband will never be able to mow that lawn. And pull that back into that hole.
Yeah.
You know, not today, not tomorrow, but just on your list, that's.
He was, oh, that's what I was gonna ask you, I just remembered, thank you. Um, there's a lot of gravel that's, you know, from the plows that have been pushed onto the side here.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, Highway at All wants to try to gather any of it up before we have someone come in and mow. Just because otherwise, we'll be paying whoever's mowing to push it off, and I know that's a process, so it might be cheaper for us to do it.
I can have the guy down, once I get everybody here.
Okay.
I know, it's kind of hard to do much with the one to two people, you know?
If you just keep me posted, so that I'll try to hold off any spring cleanup.
Yeah.
Until you guys do that, and then.
Yeah. Okay.
No, I, no, I just wanted to, just want, I'll put it on your list, oh, oh.
Yeah. Oh, but. Did you see those logs down there?
Yes, they were gone.
Yes.
I, I meant to tell you that.
Someone picked them up?
I wish. Yeah, we did, yeah, the next day.
No, thank you, I appreciate that, that was, was a second crazy, I get freaky about stuff like that, something rolls off in the road, school bus hits it, I don't.
I worry about you and your bike, unless you're not riding no more.
Oh, I'm still riding it, I'm gonna be out this week.
Okay. Alright.
You had to pick them up, huh?
Well.
Nice thinking.
Wow.
Well.
That was kind of hurtful.
That was a load of a threat.
You can't outrun me.
Anything else?
No, I think that's it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night, you good day. I'm gonna have supper.
Uh, yes, one sec.
Almost, they're close.
And we should, this should be quick. Um. Let's go. Ah, there it is. Uh, yeah, so really quick, um, reserve fund transfers, so, uh, we got a handful more. You, uh, recommend to the finance committee.
Mm-hmm.
Um, our IT line item is, it's pretty much blown through. So we're gonna need to, um. Look at that.
Okay.
I still have to dig in on the bill and see exactly how much from this reserve fund we might want to recommend. Um, but basically. You know, we had. Windows started requiring certain security updates, and so novice had to.
So we got three months to go with it? April, May, June?
Yeah, so, I mean, we could, you know, we could, we always have the option here to just put a little bit in to get the bills that are in April done, and then May first, we have year-end transfers that we can do.
Yeah.
That might be the way to go.
Yeah, that makes.
Um, and then, of course, we gotta do the Hilltown ambulance assessment that we discussed last week.
Yeah.
Um, and I gotta talk to the water department, because. They. They may have some issues as well, so I gotta.
Okay.
Clarify that with them before.
Okay.
Any further reserve fund transfers, but. More details to come on that, but I'll be meeting with the finance committee on Thursday to take care of all that stuff.
Okay.
Um, just on grants, um, so on the base date better to, together grant for the, uh, seniors and getting them hooked up with technology. Uh, so we had our last training on Monday. So I think we're gonna close that out, um. Uh, Mike, the bearded tech guy who was doing our trainings. Asked if we wanted him to put together some videos, at this point, I'm not sure we need him to.
Okay.
Um, but, um, you know, I, I kind of just want to get him paid, because I feel bad, he's been.
Yeah.
Doing his trainings for like six months at this point.
Oh, yeah, we did.
Yeah. So, um, but yeah, so we're, we'll close out that grant.
Okay.
Um, and, yeah. Feel good about it, you got.
Yeah.
Twenty seniors laptops.
That's great, that, yeah.
Turned up, so. Yeah, yeah, um, and thanks to Margaret, because she, she did a lot of the light work.
Is there, um, just before we, like, we had the last class, like, maybe some sort of like, uh?
I'll send that.
Have them write something up, just like a little bit of a, like, summary, have they, you know?
Yeah.
What they got out of it, just something for our.
Yeah.
Records, maybe.
Pamela Wright out sent a really nice email.
Oh, good, okay.
Let me pull it up really quick, because it was really. Uh.
Just thinking for like moving forward, is any other grants?
Yeah. Yeah, she said, I want to thank you, Margaret, uh. From our COA and Mike, our trainer, and Base State for the opportunity to upgrade and learn new skills with our new Chromebooks. So nice to live in a community that helps seniors fit in and explore the cyber world.
The process.
Again, thanks all, Pamela, so. So, yeah.
That's great.
Um, and well, of course, there's some reporting requirements that Margaret's gonna take care of, so we'll have, you know, what we did all documented for.
Okay.
Um, and speaking of future grant opportunities, so, uh, this, today I submitted an application for funding through Base State's Health Community Benefits Program. Um, this is specifically for the work we're looking to do at Shepherd Farm.
Uh huh.
Um, specifically, I was basically making the argument that, hey, what we're trying to do here is open this up for recreation in some form, right now, uh, you know, you're not even really allowed to go on the property.
Uh huh.
Um, so, uh, we'll see what happens, you know, I ran it by our contact at Base State, and I said, oh, yeah, this, this definitely meshes with our. Um, you know, basically our community benefits plan. Um, so we'll see, we'll know, uh.
That'd be great.
In mid-May about funding for that, so.
Okay.
So more to come, and on the same subject. Um, I am also looking at, uh, submitting, uh, New England Mountain Biking Association Trail Grant.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so one of our Conservation Commission members, John Piper, is an avid mountain biker. Um, and as far as we can tell, there's nothing in the conservation restriction at Shepherd Farm that says no mountain biking.
Okay.
Um, so I think kind of building that into what the student is creating in their project.
Yeah.
Could be, you know, could be great, and so there's, you know, very small grants available through that organization, so.
That's great.
So, yeah, we'll see, um, more to come on that.
Okay.
Uh, ongoing projects, Resilient Dirt Roads, uh, so we are gonna have the first of the community meetings coming up on Friday at the COA luncheon. Um, I, I, I think Paula, our liaison to the community, was handing out flyers at the dump, or excuse me, the transfer station. Uh, on Saturday, so she handed out like eighty flyers or something, um. We'll see if, you know, people show up, uh, and then we've got another one coming up on April twenty-fourth. That'll be, you know, like, right before the Slight Word meeting, so. So, yeah, we'll see, um, PVPC will be there, they'll do a little presentation, and then I think most of it will be just looking at apps and people telling us, hey, I have a problem with this road or that road, and.
Okay.
Yeah. People that live on them, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Great.
Uh, and then I would give you an update on the Fire Highway Facility Project, but I feel like you were already there for it, so. So we can just move.
Yeah.
Move on past that one, obviously, we're trying to put together some kind of outreach meetings in May. Um. Other departments, water departments, so the SCADA project.
Yep.
Um, so we are looking to put that out to bid. This week, uh, Ray Pierce has put together all the documents.
Okay.
Um, I reached out to the Country Journal to run a notice, and we're getting it on combines tomorrow. Um, so it'll be out there, and then see, uh, what comes back in terms of bids for that project.
Okay.
Um, just a reminder, so. Uh, the, the water department, well, it's not finalized, but what they're trying to get is a no-interest loan through the state's revolving fund for, for clean water projects. Um, so if they were to get that based on what our financial advisor said, you know. We're not projecting that there would be a needed rate increase at this point.
Okay.
So.
That'd be great.
So, yeah, for the moment, it seems like we're good, but again, it kind of all depends on what comes back in terms of bits.
Also.
So we'll see. Um, and then, Steve, I feel like I have one more update for you guys.
Uh, fire chief?
Oh, yes, 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 um, so Chester reached out. Uh, so if you recall, at one point, it said. No, we don't want to be your dancing partner, we're gonna pass some special legislation and have Richie Small be our chief for five more years.
Yeah.
They've since reversed on that, for whatever reason, um, so they are interested again in collaborating on chief position. Um, I'll say, just based on some preliminary conversations with their finance chair. That they're, we're pretty far apart in terms of salary that we offer and.
Oh.
And potentially number of hours.
Okay.
Um, but I don't think it's necessarily, you know. Uh, something we can't overcome. Um, we just have to.
I'm guessing they're lower than us.
They are, yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and, uh, they also mentioned that Worthington is also potentially gonna be looking, but I don't know if that's.
That's out there.
Too far sealed.
That's out there.
That's right.
Oh, yeah, so, um.
Okay. Um, should we, uh, we should plan on meeting with them, I'm just trying to think exactly how our police, how we started that journey.
Yeah, so, um, I did talk to PVPC today about, you know, some kind of efficiency and regionalization grant, or some kind of. Project in, in that way, um, you know, those grants don't really go out until the fall. Um, so one thing that Andy from the finance committee was suggesting was, you know, we have some kind of interim thing. For the first. Three to six months of FY twenty-four, and then we. Go try to get a grant to actually look at regionalizing and, and move from there.
Okay.
Um, so there's lots of ideas out there, I will also mention that, um, Ira from PVPC pointed out that, uh, I think Goshen, Williamsburg, a whole bunch of other towns around there. Tried to do the same thing a few years ago, I'm not really sure where it stands.
Okay.
But they looked at regionalizing. Uh, fire chief, and then possibly something to do with EMS, I know they all have Highland Ambulance up there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so anyway, there's something to draw from in terms of.
Okay.
Yes. But yeah, so for the moment, um, you know, Chester is interested. It just seems like, you know, there's a little bit of a gap in terms of.
There was a gap when we started with these two, um, but we were able to come, I mean, there, we did again, end up with the situation with, um, chief, we, we, we'd us, we'd us. Um, which there was still some discrepancy with price.
Right.
Um, but I think we're in a decent place now, so just so you know, that is definitely our country.
Yeah.
I think because there was so much, um, media around the police thing, we had the sort of that jumpstart with all the, the help we were getting from, you know, local governments, um, so I don't know. I think we, the feasibility study was the first thing that we did. We got a grant for it, and I think that was how it kickstarted, but.
Wow.
Um, yeah, if we need to have a meeting, I think, just to get started.
Yeah, I, yeah, and maybe it makes sense to reach out and say, hey, we kinda need to do our check-in on the police as well, you know, maybe if I. And I, I don't, I know Jason recently departed from their select board, so I don't know what the story is that I'm close. Yeah, it's too bad. Um, but yeah, we could invite them here and, and say, hey, can we, you know, over? Maybe get a status report from, um, from Chief Dubiel, uh, because I don't think we've really done that.
Yeah.
Um, and then, you know, maybe talk about, hey, this joint fire chief opportunity. So I can reach out to them and see.
Yeah, maybe like at some point before the month is over.
Yeah, yeah.
Not too soon.
I mean, there's only one, there's only one meeting left, so.
Yeah. And that, we can be flex, flexible, I think, with Monday meeting. I can move. Can you guys be, I think they meet on Tuesdays.
They, they meet on Mondays as well.
Yeah, if they want us to come there.
Yeah.
Come here, but we can be flexible, but I do think we need to meet.
Okay, yeah, I will put that on my list. Reach out to them. And I was.
So are they had an empty seat on their board right now?
That's, uh, I'm not sure, but I, I think so, because I think Jason resigned, so.
Okay.
Um, I will also talk to the finance committee about this on Thursday, get their take on things and rough, uh, budget comfort level.
Yeah. Okay. All right, um, and then we have, oops, what just happened? Um, we've got the, uh, redo. You, TJ, you have a question on the fair?
What's been paid out and what happened?
Uh, so.
I believe that six thousand dollar check was paid out to the fair, wasn't it? No, my.
I don't think so. No, so at this point, so we got a quote from them.
Okay.
In the fall, um, so.
Yeah, and we, we had talked about releasing it in the spring.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then what about the, like, the library? Did they get their?
Yeah, so that's, yeah, so with the library, um, yeah, I don't, I don't know if we've actually, can't recall if we've cut a check yet. Um, but they are using that, um.
No, I don't remember.
As part of the, um, the funding towards that overall Porter Memorial patio project that, that they have going.
So how are you working it? Do you get a bill, um, first from the company, or?
Yeah, so, sorry, go ahead.
I think what I remember is that he was asked to submit a bill, and there was a conversation about, well, we wanna work on the fence, but it won't pay for the whole fence.
Mm-hmm.
And then the conversation moved to, well, this is not gonna be awarded. There's still, uh, paperwork that needs to be done. This is not gonna be awarded until the spring.
Yeah, that was the last thing I heard.
We, we awarded it. We both, we both.
Right, yeah.
And then they said they couldn't do it till spring.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's what the deal was, if I remember right, right? And they said when they get a chance, they'll have it done with whatever amount, but they couldn't do any more than whatever.
We never got an invoice either, and we.
Well, they have, yeah, because they can't.
The thing of it now is that, what they're looking at, when I last talked with Bruce, was if they can get the, the fence done early.
Mm-hmm.
Cause they have so much damage on the fairgrounds from the rust.
Yeah.
You know, if they do all the damaged stuff, there may not be time to do the fence. So I, I, I don't know. I just, you know, if they're, if they got the money, they can get it done, and then they can put their endeavors on the barns.
So we can't just cut a check. We need to have an actual, like, invoice from the company.
And, uh, Jeff, that, um, Nicole, what she did was she said, this is what we were planning. We wanna do this, this, and this, and we expect it'll cost about this much. And then the, the board decided how much money they were gonna grant her, so that's.
That ten thousand, and then it got reduced.
Yeah.
And, and then, so I'm just wondering if everybody else got paid out. Why haven't the fair?
No, that's not the case, TJ. If we have an invoice, we can pay it. We can't just give them money.
Right.
So all these other projects have not been paid except for the store.
Uh, are you insinuating that we're discriminating against the fair? Because.
Trying to find out who has received.
Uh, so, so mostly, because.
Most of them have.
If you, if you remember, you know, so this grant, they released the funds pretty late, and obviously we have a pretty short construction time span here up in Blanford. Um, so the, and so when, when we talked to, uh, the Regional Economic Development Organization, they said that fine, you can, you know, get it done spring because we know we got those funds out late. So, you know, I'll be, I can reach out this week and check on, you know, the status of the animal hospital, because I know they had a project. Um, I've, I've been working with Nicole on the.
So the money doesn't get released until the project's done, correct?
Not until it's done. No, we at least need to see.
Like, you, you're going on quotation.
Not an interesting quote, yeah.
So the quote that the fair got for the fence doesn't apply.
Yes, it would apply if they got a quote and it was forty thousand dollars. I'm just making that up.
Yeah.
They give it to us and we say, okay, here's your six thousand dollars. This is all we awarded you toward the fence.
And that wasn't done.
No, that, we, we can, we can, I think we, we can, we're in heated agreement here. We can release the funds for the fair.
Yeah.
We've already awarded, we just.
Yeah, well, I, I, I was under the impression that they went out and they had a bid and it was submitted.
Yeah, I, I.
I don't know if it was a formal bidder, if it was.
I just saw, I, I mean, I saw a quote, yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't see one.
I didn't, so.
The amount was much more than six thousand. But.
We read the fun part.
We, we use some funds to pay into another, okay. I'm just trying to stay up to.
Yeah, no, because we were trying.
Six thousand in the end, yeah.
We were trying to fund a little of everything.
Yeah.
Um, and I think we had given the fair.
That's all there is. Sounds like switching between the crafts and.
Sorry, that happens.
Yeah, we'll take care of it, TJ.
Yeah, I'm sure.
All right, are we all set? No.
You gotta do it this week.
Seventy-five percentage, a little over. All right, hold on, all department expenditure. Yeah, we've talked about treasurer clerk a couple of times. I know that one's fun. Town clerk is back in line. Good, good. On how utilities we know about, IT we know about.
I never got the paperwork from accounting today, so I'm gonna call you guys in tomorrow.
Those are both special town meeting, okay. Fire department expenses we talked about. Ambulance, we. Talked with the highway ones. There's a couple there.
No, this one under, for the, for the garage ramp and doors.
That's the special coming in beforehand?
Yeah, I know, but what I'm asking is, they didn't do anything to them.
So I.
They put the doors up.
Right, yeah, they did the doors.
So they gotta wait till spring.
Yeah. I'd have to check with Adam, but I know he's aware of, like, the fact that we.
All right, I didn't know.
Yeah.
Is the general, uh, the building maintenance, oh, that's, never mind, that's, well, that's bored to hell. They're at eighty-six percent for building and maintenance.
Yeah, um, yeah, I can check in with them about that. I will say their expense account is hardly been touched also, so it's.
Yeah.
That's eleven percent expended.
Yeah, so there's, there is, so they can probably move some money around, okay. It's a good point. Only forty-nine eighty-four left in council on aging admin support.
Well, that's, that's the one she always spends that one down. I know, these are kinda like bingo or something, right?
Sound and shines, yeah. What's water doing? Ooh, utilities is.
Going up.
Office expenses, oh, they got quite a few up at ninety-nine.
Yeah, so we're, I'm, I'm talking to accounting, because there's been some issues there, um, so.
They have, I'm trying to think. Looks like they have some left in chemicals if they're gonna, I don't know if they have made a big chemical order. But, yeah, they're. Ooh, they're, they're tight.
Yeah, yeah, so I, we're talking to accounting.
Okay.
Um, and like I said, there might, might need to be some reserve fund transfers.
Yeah, so, so out of the total budget, if I'm reading this right. It's two hundred, wait. All right, so two hundred, wait, expended is, ah, I keep reading this isn't touchscreen.